Okay. Good afternoon. This is the Planning Commission. It is the February 7th, 2:30. We have a quorum, obviously. Everybody's here. Chief of the New Member, Christine. First thing on the agenda is, after a quorum, is administer an oath. Anybody who plans to speak, please stand up and be sworn in. Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great. Thanks. I'm acting as interim chair because John Prisley, who served us well for many years, 16 years, I'm told, rather than the 12 we discussed, has stopped attending or wanted to be off it. We have two cases today. We'll start with case 0801, Pendleton LTD. This is on 176 Mill Street. This is one of the first processes in terms of Title 41, which is a site review plan that was initiated last year by the City Council. Where we were last time is we were developing a draft checklist, but in lieu of that, the developer put forth a pretty comprehensive packet on all the things that needed to be covered on this. I think where we left last time was discussion of sprinkling and I forget what else.
Shade Tree Commission.
Shade Tree Commission. And we did receive a response from the Shade Tree Commission, I believe. And if my memory is correct, that was a pretty much, they found no problem with it, I believe. Is that the case, Steve?
We should have forwarded an email from the tree committee.
Yes.
That they've given a big approval.
Okay. Why don't you sit up by a mic so people can hear you? You're not officially, you can do that. Okay, yes, February 1st, was it? And this was from the Shade Tree Commission. Provisional approval on landscape ordinance, they had some recommendations. Did everybody get one of those, I think?
Yes.
I think they were putting on a loss of the existing large tree, loss of a large tree on the east side of the house, which would be compensated by planting one more shade tree on either of the property of 76 or nearby city right of way. They also discuss the trees must be a minimum of two inches. That was the main point, I think, that needed to be brought up. Anything else? Was it, Peg? I know you're here.
The only other thing was the question about sprinkling and the information that we were just given. This book has discussion of sprinkling and the fact that the Pendleton Development comes under the 2006 edition of the Residential Code of Ohio, which then says that sprinklers won't be required for it and that sprinklers for the garage will not be required under that code. So that pretty well answers the other question that we had about it, I think. Do we need, with this recommendation from the Shade Tree Commission, do we need to do anything to recommend permission for them to plant shade trees in the city right of way? Is that a variance?
No. The Service Safety Director, with the recommendation in concurrence of the Tree Commission, can allow plantings in the right of way. And that also has to do with cutting of trees, pruning of trees, planting of trees.
Okay. So with those issues settled and with the draft of the Site Plan Review Checklist, I move that we approve the application, Pendleton Limited.
Second.
Okay. In terms of discussion, I'd like to hear something from Chief Troxel.
We have to take it off the table first.
Oh, we have to take it off the table?
Well, we tabled it and I didn't remember that.
I didn't remember it either.
Okay, I move that we take it off the table for discussion.
I'll second. Okay. All in favor of taking it off the table?
Aye.
Okay, aye. It's off the table and now we can discuss it. Now you move to accept it?
Now I move to accept it.
Second. Okay, discussion wise, I'd like to hear from Chief Troxel concerning a sprinkler system and his concerns. I think in terms of Site Plan Review, we do have to try putting this in over and above our requirements, seeing that these are minimum requirements. But again, this is something that we should take under consideration. Chief?
Yeah, I think anytime we have an opportunity to strongly suggest or recommend that property be sprinkled, we need to do so and with as much emphasis as we can because, as you all know, we've had fires in the city that unfortunately have lost a light. The High Street Fire two years back, we lost two students. So again, anytime we have this opportunity, we realize that this structure is not required under the state code to be sprinkled. However, that does not certainly relieve us of the responsibility of bringing this issue forward. You're all aware, we have a fire department that is certainly limited on staffing. We're now putting automobiles underneath residence units. If those particular vehicles catch fire, it's not only a fire issue, but it's a toxic gas and fumes issue that can be drawn into the air handling units and right into the structure. A sprinkler system would go a long ways in reducing that. Most fires are extinguished or certainly controlled by one sprinkler hit. So by putting a 13R system in, which is the least expensive of all sprinkler systems, I think would be prudent. Again, I understand that it is not required by state code. However, if there's any variances or anything in that nature that has to be given in this project, I would certainly and strongly recommend that we require this 13R system.
Okay. I will point out that variances actually went to the zoning board appeals and were approved at that point.
Understood.
So it fell out of our purview as Planning Commission at this point.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are you recommending sprinklers at a minimum only in the garage or for the whole structure?
I think when you design a 13R system, it will require that the entire structure be sprinkled. You can't piecemeal it, my understanding. So when the design is developed, it would require the entire structure.
Somebody mentioned at the last meeting the problem of sprinklers in the garage freezing. Is that?
Well, we have sprinklers in the garages all over the city and we rarely have an issue. I mean, there are certainly technologies there that prevent this, either dry systems. They now have dry pendulants that take care of these issues. So yes, it is a concern, but the technology is certainly there to deal with those concerns.
Other questions?
I'd like to amend my motion.
Okay.
And I would amend the motion to approve this with the addition of 13R sprinkler system. I have not been easy in my mind imagining the way that the apartments are going to be built and so on with no sprinklers and no other way to get out of what will be effectively the third floor if there's a fire. And so.
Okay, I'll second that. More discussion. Would you like to?
What, so that you may have all information?
Could you go up to microphone and state your name, either at the chair, table, or at the podium? Your choice.
I'm Caroline Thomason. I just want to give you the opportunity. We've passed out packets here with more information from our architect, Jim Thomas of Panacham Mill. He is here and also Todd Wingent, who would be building the unit. If you would like to have more information about the structure in and of itself, this would be the opportunity to acquire that. Thank you.
I know, last time we were discussing this, you had concerns about fire escapes, Chief Troxel? Was there?
No, I did not have.
Well, your email or your letter, I'm a little confused by the discussion we had about fire stairs and fire escapes from your letter. There was some concern about that.
Yeah.
So you're saying?
Yeah, could you please?
The fire stair, okay, you were talking about that this fire stair issue would go away completely if there was, if the building was sprinkled.
In my opinion, if you sprinkled a building, the egress issue would go away because many times when the building is sprinkled, it relaxes egress requirements to some degree. And that was the point I was trying to make, that because there was a question on what is a fire stair and that's sort of an ambiguous term anymore.
And I think of my concern, one of the early readings was the height of the second story windows and what does somebody get out of that as a secondary exit? I mean, I think the Housing Code requires at least two ways of getting in and out of there. And this, the windows would certainly cover that. The question is how far do you have to drop to get there? And that discussion at one point was ladders, which I'm told is not part of the code anymore or considered acceptable. And then the other one was to sprinkle it as a countermeasure. Were there discussions on this?
Perhaps we ought to talk to their, have their architect speak?
Yes, would you like to speak?
I don't have any, generally say, oh, the building has been designed to meet the high state building code. This particular building, if we did sprinkle it, we wouldn't have any real benefits or relaxation in the code for this building because it already, we have to have the garage area one hour rated either way, which it is. The stairs are all single egress, so each apartment has its own stair and that's separated from the garage by an hour construction. And as far as the windows and all, I don't know exactly when the second egress kicks in, but windows, multiple floors work for a second egress as far as for the code gives. Do you have any questions?
Are there firewalls between the apartments?
There's a firewall between, there's four apartments. There's a firewall between two sets of apartments. And then each of those other two groups have a one-hour rated wall between them. So two pairs have an hour rating between them and then there's two-hour firewall between those. And then there's an hour separation between the garage and the apartments above.
If you're in the second floor, or the third, you're in the top floor and a fire starts on the floor below you and makes the stairwell impassable.
Well, the stairwell doesn't go through the garage?
No, I know.
And it's separated from the garage?
Yeah, and this is aside from a garage. There's somebody smoking in bed.
Okay.
And a fire starts on the first residential floor. Are you on the second floor? Do you have any other way to get out beside the stairwell?
Just the egress windows, the windows in the saving rooms.
And if you're in the other apartment of that pair, there also is not a firewall between?
There's a one-hour fire separation.
Okay. And that means it will take an hour for any fire to burn through or what does that rating mean?
Is that true, Chief Troxel? I mean, that's what they call it, a one-hour separation.
Right. And to me, fire separation, firewalls, you sort of miss the issue. The issue from my perspective, we lose more people from toxic fumes than we do people who burn up. And my concern is always, how do we prevent or at least reduce the amount of toxic gases that are being produced? In this instance, we may have a firewall and it may well, in fact, stop the flame impingement for an hour. What it does not stop in many instances is the accumulation of toxic gases and fumes. And like I say, we lose more people because of that issue than we ever do because of direct flame impingement on an individual. So, and that goes back to my primary concern is we now have vehicles underneath these residential units. And as you all know, you've all seen vehicle fires and you know how black the smoke is, you know, and we have certainly a tremendous amount of gasoline potential. That's my concern is once we have a vehicle fire, then we're going to have fumes and vapors get into these apartments. There's no way that you're going to prevent that, either through the air handling units or if the kids sleep with their windows open or something at three o'clock in the morning and this happens, that's the potential that we're looking at. And that's my biggest concern. You know, I certainly understand the cost of sprinklers and I can appreciate that, but I have to look at it for my recommendation is if we have an opportunity to make a structure safer, why wouldn't we do it? I know the state code, many times if those are minimum codes and it does not take into account the idiosyncrasies of a particular community. And, you know, our community, we happen to have a large population of young adults. We know many times that Thursday and Friday, Saturday nights, those young adults may not be a full faculty. And we have to deal with that. And anytime that we have, like I say, we have an opportunity to present an argument for something that will help reduce the possibility of a fire death in the city, then we're certainly going to pursue that argument.
And sprinklers would, in general, would put out on a vehicle fire?
Sprinklers have a better than 90% effectiveness with one head going on. And what that simply means is that it will either contain or put out the fire until the fire department arrives. And, you know, with our response time, we're pretty fortunate to have about a four-minute response time. So at least that head will keep the fire contained until we can get there and will not allow it to progress much beyond that. Now, obviously, there are instances where that may not be the case, but I think certainly when we're looking at better than 90%, that's pretty good.
I would also, I think, as you say, that the population in the city, you know, being students, I'm aware that many of them know a lot of stuff and many of them don't know a lot of how things run in the city and even in general safety issues. So I'd actually be leaning towards sprinkling, sprinkling the system as well.
And we've had many facilities throughout the city that have voluntarily sprinkled their buildings. And I think you certainly have to applaud that group of landlords who have done that. And I think if anybody speaks to those people, that they have had very little issues with doing that. In fact, they may have even gotten some reduction on their insurance premiums by doing it. They're, you know, even if you, in my opinion, if you do not receive anything from a benefit perspective, I think if I was a landlord, the peace of mind would go a long ways in doing this. So that's about all I can contribute, I guess.
Any other questions for the architect?
But I would like to add that we are also going to have, you know, each apartment has interconnected smoke detectors and throughout the stories and the rooms, and that'll also be connected to devices in the garage. So if something were to happen in the garage, those people would be notified.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you then. Any other, so we still have a motion. Any other input from the audience? And as it stands now, the motion is accepted with the requirement of a sprinkler, 13R system, is that what I'm hearing? Okay, shall we vote on this then? Okay, how does everybody vote? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Opposed? Okay, five zero in favor. Okay, so the requirement is to do some sprinkling in your design. Thank you, Chief. The next case is 0802. This is amended the zoning, Depot Street. From what we received, this is for the station project area by the way. And the discussion was at one point, do we consider this amendment to PUD or do we consider this something that has to be rezoned? The way, I think you were speaking to, February you were speaking to the Mo. Director about this?
Yes.
Okay.
He did do it as a new project.
Okay. And one of the elements of that, of course, is that the original plan of your development is actually on city property for the most part. And this is actually mostly not on the city property, it's actually standalone, on its own. So it should be looked at as a plan of your development. Of course, it has to, or rather, no, not planning, it has a rezoning because it is in that room, sorry. Anything you want to add, Steve?
The process of rezoning is some, is separate and apart from a planned unit development review and approval. So there's another lengthy process yet to be accomplished. The rezoning actually was started at the request of the owner and their representative. And the Planning Commission asked that I put actually the rezoning packet together. So what you're considering right now is just a recommendation to council to rezone the area.
Okay.
As opposed to starting into the whole planned unit development review process.
Yeah, I misspoke there. It actually, probably as a plan of your development, it is under two acres and therefore probably falls out of the plan of your development? Or is it two acres?
No, it's just right around one acre.
Okay. Unless we're going to cover our entire depot, I suspect, right?
The minimum threshold is two acres for planned unit development, although the city has previously reviewed planned unit developments with variances recommended for less than a two-acre project.
Okay, so the next process really would be to, we don't really recommend to the council unless we have a public hearing, don't we? Have to, the process of this?
Public hearing, I believe, is optional.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Hold on just a second. I'll let you know for sure. I brought everything with the zoning code with me. I'm pretty sure, to be honest with you, that.
I did not bring my copy of the zoning code.
Yeah, the Planning Commission public hearing on any rezoning, either for language or for, either for text or for map amendment, the public hearing is optional. It says if the Planning Commission deems it necessary, now council has to have a public hearing. When there's a public hearing that the Planning Commission requests or schedules, the response time, if it's something that's forwarded from council, goes from 60 days to 90 days. There's a 30-day additional allowance if a public hearing is deemed necessary. Past planning commissions have gone both ways on if one was necessary or was not. In any case, there's a minimum of one at the council level that's required.
Okay. And at this point, what we're talking about is the area not including the depot area?
In the pack of information that I provided to you, there should be quite a few drawings.
Okay.
And.
See if I can track them down here in my file.
Actually, it's a series of two or four drawings. Should be one that, as the Planning Commission asked, that I do have a map showing zoning for the vicinity. And then I highlighted the property in question. Then I've got one where you go in a little closer and it shows the existing zoning close to the area, another map then that shows the particular parcel in question. And this one, you should be able to see that just to the south of the property in question, the land is all owned by the City of Athens. It was part of a grant program to rehab the entire area. Just above it, you can see properties owned by the, by Athens Station Incorporated. That's where the station itself is actually located. And then a small strip of land adjacent to West Union Street, again, owned by the city. And the property in question right now is owned by Business Associates, where Tuscano's is located.
Okay. And you have maps on this?
Yeah, here's the.
No, I have maps. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, this is a block, this is a section, right aside. Next one, this is a section, almost 0.8 acres, 0.8 acres, business section. If you look at the adjacent, John Ross Temple Building.
School.
Or public school, yes. Boundary of any residential zoning district. Public park as defined by 2310 of the zoning code. Public library or any other sexually-owned business, which is interesting. I didn't read that one.
That's something I don't understand, I would think.
You want to keep it one lump, is that it?
Well, yeah.
The idea is that then you don't get red light district.
You just have small red lights.
Little LEDs or red light. I think Steve pointed out the fact that in some of the definition, the bike path, am I correct in this, the bike path covers, is considered part of a park area.
Right, it's specifically listed in the definition, which is further back, what park lands are, it includes bike path. I had previously reviewed this ordinance in April and that was some of the concern that I had, was essentially take a 2,000-foot swath out of the city following the bike path.
Okay, I see that section you're talking about. That's.
What I would like to do for you is to take a zoning map and identify the B3 and M zones, then identify any of the distance separation requirements to see where possibly this type of activity could take place. It'll be limited to B3 or M zones and then areas at least 1,000 feet away from that. You know, that list, I'm not sure what a landmark is.
It's one of those little square things, on the side of the road. That was, has an.
So, but that may not be a problem, you know, for this initial review because there are some of those other things that are very easily identified, churches, schools, residential zones.
Can you find out a definition of a landmark? When I think landmark, the only thing I think of is that Camp Wool stone that's in front of West Elementary, of course, it overlaps with the school anyway. So why don't you, yeah, can you do that draw a map?
Sure, I'd be glad to do that.
Because we might be zoning it out entirely and I, I know that, I don't know if that's, I assume that's legal too to do, but on the other hand, it sounds like we're, I want to find out what we're actually creating.
Well, I mean, if it would not necessarily rule it out if Anax Land came in and you put it in.
So this is like University State, you think?
Yeah.
No, it's not, doesn't have an M zone yet. It does, may have a B3.
B3.
Again, I don't really want to act on it immediately, but I think we need to be looking at it.
I'll have that map prepared for you by the next meeting.
Okay, thanks. The other two, I just lost my agenda, I turned over here. I also mentioned in their review of the B3 zoning and definitions of buildings, there are two reasons why I brought this up. I don't know if you ended up with any literature on that dating from, there was an ordinance that was passed in 2003. And I gave, got two copies of the struck out portions of it. Two things recurring here. One is, I've had mostly copied the whole chunk of the zoning for that particular, and you guys probably were around, Carrie and Peg for this, was, there was a section on page, let's see if I can find this here, 38. And this has. And this has to do with the, this is part of the discussion that has been occurring on Stimson, that it's a B three zone that does not allow eating and drinking establishments. And you can see where the, this is halfway down, I guess it'd be part three. And if you read the rest, it says drive-in eating and drinking places, summer gardens and roadhouses, provided principal building shall not, shall be at least a distance of not less than two hundred feet from an R zone or R one or R two zone. You can see it's struck out everything and so it reads eating and drinking establishments, the principal building shall not, shall be at least two hundred feet from an R or two zone. And I'm not, the way I've been hearing this is this may not have been the original intent in terms of how it was struck down like this. And again, what I'm hearing from the developers on Stimson is that this precludes putting any type of restaurant in on Stimson except what's grandfathered in it because they're away, they're within two hundred feet of both Morris and Palmer in terms of R zones. Although I think R Palmer's an R three, isn't it?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's a R one zone we're talking about.
I can't believe that this was the real intent.
Well, again, this is something, well...
It was a really complicated process.
I'm aware of that, I just, you know, realize, I just gave you pages thirty, what is it, twenty-nine to forty?
Yeah.
And you can tell there was more after this, and I know it was an undertaking. And what I want us to do is look at that and see if this needs to be corrected. And it doesn't, again, I don't expect us to jump on it right now, I'd rather have us think it through before we do anything, but I'm bringing it to your attention. And that's, that's part of the reason why it's under communications. The other piece I, I copied out is definitions of the same code, and again, you should have that as well, it should come with the front page of the ordinance itself. And that was the definitions of buildings. And I, I apologize, I did not get, I did not copy the entire packet that Steve gave us on building definitions. He gave it, I know to me, and I know he gave it to Beverly or Paula at one point.
I can get more copies of that for you if you want.
When you get a chance, can you, okay, because we're not going to act on it today. Again, part of this, part of the strikeout has to do with a definition with unpierced walls or firewalls in that sense. Cognizant of the fact that we just discussed a building that had firewalls, you know, on Mill Street, four ways, which would be a four-way building if we could really go to this. But part of the, the view of this is how do we, how do we look at buildings? And again, this was pointed out to me saying, two thousand and three, we had a much more complex definition, which got simplified quite a bit and may not have hit the mark either. And I, I know we could talk about various examples that we're seeing being built right now or in process. And I, I'm not being critical, but I know, and I know having sat through the audience during two thousand and three and watching this, this undertaking happen between council and the planning commission, it's easy that things might have gotten, got astray. Go ahead, Nick.
There were also so many versions.
Yes.
That the, now the strikeouts sort of represent what was there before, but not necessarily everything.
No, they don't, they don't. In fact, if I look at my old codebook, which is that little blue one many years ago, it does not have this in here. So this was one of the versions that was, you know, before, you know, after the blue book and before the final structure we have now as a binder. I'm a pack rat, so I have posits stuff, wherever I can find it is a number. And again, I'm putting this out just because I think we wanted to look at it. Steve has, gave me a massive, massive tone of projects he wants us to deal with for the next upcoming meetings or terms. One including building definitions in terms of buildings, other ones in terms of LED lights, which he brought up before you previously. And this is, this is the packet he gave me, which I have yet to really go through in pieces. You know, political signs need to be addressed.
Oh, that sounds familiar.
Yes. I know, but there are things that we, we should be looking at and I, I'm not going to give you the task to do it today or in the next three meetings, but I think we want to look at this stuff. And I just start with these two because these were the ones pointed out to me that were timely. And actually something that had been discussed before and therefore maybe we may want to review. And that's all I'll say on it, okay? Unless you want to say some more.
No, I, the other thing I would say is that I think we ought to reexamine the descriptions of the different zones.
Yes.
Because even while we were working on the, the revision of the zoning code, practices in different zones were changing and the, and home businesses and things like that need to be addressed and we need to look at what really is manufacturing. Maybe we need some manufacturing zones to remain, but not probably with the definitions that they had before.
That has been brought up as well, there's a case where somebody's come across and saying, I, I am doing assembly of machine parts and is it manufacturing or not? Is saucer, let's say, at Ace Net, is that manufacturing? Assembling a hamburger, is that manufacturing? No, and I, and I say this because manufacturing, most people think this smokestack industry, assembly line, you know, and, and all the accoutrements of, you know, the, the Iron Age or whatever you want to call it, industrial age. And therefore we have to look at this. I don't know if this, the, the planning commission is capable or willing to take this on because you saw what this monster this was. But I think we should be looking at some of the, some of the issues along the way. And we don't have to do it all at once and we don't have to do it hodgepodge, I hope. We could actually, hopefully when we get a planner on board, we can give them that stuff to do. Or at least some of it. I know that's going to be one of the tasks of a, in theory, a planner to put the, implement the comprehensive plan, but also to, to update our code. I think in two thousand and one, I know that the council, I put, somebody spent five thousand for an upgrade of our code or critique of it. And they were kind of surprised at how we had this cupcake layer, B one, B two, B three, and that we should be more specific. And again, this is a big task for, for a commission like this, but they need to be looked at along the way. Steve has talked about the concept of light manufacturing versus heavy manufacturing. We should be looking at what defines a B three as well as B ones realized. Ten years ago, I know the commission here was talking about eliminating B ones, but most, you know, if you could say that now for Village Baker or someplace like that, you wouldn't be popular, but you know, ten years ago you would be when, when you were looking at that. And so again, I'm just bringing up some tasks that I look to the future that we'll have to deal with. Okay, so I think I've covered everything communications. I did ask Chuck Hammer to be here, I think Steve, we wanted to talk a little bit about the take on the last communication we had last meeting concerning Mr. DiAgostino's property. Mostly had to do with the, a lot split on Waterloo Township Brown Road. I have this stuff here if you want to look at it. Can you give us your take on it, Chuck?
Sure.
Okay, and you're welcome to go to podium, sit down, good choice.
That'll work. Thank you for asking me to come. In, in the county health board regulations regarding subdivisions and new lots, it says the Board of Health review required in paragraph D of this rule, subdivisions and new lots, shall be coordinated as applicable with authorities having responsibility for the requirements established in chapter seven-one-one of the revised code, zoning, recording, parcels of land and other land use authorities. So it's part of my mandate, I guess, to report to you and coordinate with you as a body that has responsibility under that seven-one-one. And I would prefer that be proactive rather than reactive. And, you know, today, this was highly engaging to be at the meeting today. But if I don't show up every time, it doesn't mean that I'm not interested. Anytime that you want me to come here, I'm at your disposal. So I appreciate it. If I could give a little presentation, just generally speaking, the goals that we have at the health department with regard to lot splits and approvals of proposed lots, our overarching goal is to provide assurance that the created lot or lots have all the necessary resources onsite to accommodate a sustainable, non-discharging home sewage treatment system that functions properly, that prevents nuisances and protects the public health. And in places like Brown Road, that might mean, there might be generations before public sewers get to those sites to serve those houses. But I think it's also probably plain that there will be houses out there from henceforth. And they will be producing wastewater. Without zoning, building permits, restrictive covenants and other enforcement-heavy restrictions, generous parameters must be employed as part of the planning process to create lots that are both flexible in terms of potential use and sustainable in terms of the basic sanitary infrastructure. We, we hope that we can evaluate a lot and get something that's just right, like Goldilocks wanted. If it's too big, it doesn't really have a public health downside. If it's too small, it could be, it could have a significant public health downside if the adequate resources aren't on the lot to provide that sustainable, long-term treatment of the sewage. The onsite resources should be adequate to allow for the simplest, lowest tech and lowest cost options for sewage treatment and disposal. That maximizes the options and opportunities for developers and minimizes potential development and operation costs, which include energy inputs that might be for the life of the system, that's needed for development, maintenance and operation of a sewage treatment system. Special consideration must be given to areas where sewage disposal may include risks of pathogen or nutrient contamination to surface or groundwater. Approved lots should also be free of other conditions that do not meet minimum public health standards. For example, an old abandoned well, a pile of tires on a property, or a sewage system that's either failed or in disrepair, poorly maintained, or out of compliance otherwise. That's about it in terms of the general stuff, except I wanted to give you a brief history of the involvement of the health department with sewage systems. I think it probably started before this, but in nineteen oh three, in our minute books, the Athens Village Board of Health passed a whole series of ordinances. They included restrictions on sewage disposal and regulation of what they called sanitary appliances, which probably the appliances they were talking about, we may not have some of those now, but we have a lot of other kinds of appliances. There, it's an interesting read often.
You're talking about outhouses?
Well...
Chamber pots?
Yeah, yeah, those kinds of things.
Okay.
And there were also, in the village, there were ordinances that regulated the hauling of night soil from the village to, and it's, it regulated what, how you could haul it, when you could haul it, who could do it, with what kind of device, and then where it went.
It's very strict.
Oh, it's terrible. In nineteen forty-four, there was a new local sanitary ordinances that included sewage disposal rules adopted under emergency rule by the Athens County, City-County Health Department, due to the existing rules being quote entirely inadequate for the protection of the health and welfare of the people of the district. In nineteen forty-seven, there was a state manual for sanitarians published with recommendations for a sewage program, including design requirements, permits and inspections. We had already adopted it several years earlier. Nineteen sixty-seven, there was a local Board of Health ordinance by the Athens City-County Health Department, which mandated county-wide sewage disposal requirements, including strict scrutiny of subdivisions, soil testing, flow estimates from homes, soil ba, of wastewater, soil-based sewage disposal systems and denial of permits when the soil was not suitable. That rule in nineteen sixty-seven established some minimum lot sizes. In nineteen seventy-four, there was a report from the Athens County Prosecutor's Office to the planning commission, regional planning commission, asking for a building permit procedure to be put in place relative basically to sewage disposal requirements. In nineteen seventy-six, Board of Health representatives requested the county commission to coordinate information for lot splits regarding sewage disposal because of difficulties we were having with lots being approved, houses being built, and no opportunity to put a proper sewage system on. In nineteen seventy-seven, there was a state sewage regulation passed that was statewide minimum regulations. In two thousand and one, there was publication of a, a method of soil evaluation that we're using now, and since two thousand and five, we've started to use this Tyler method for determination of suitability of soil for wastewater. In two thousand and six, there was adoption of a statewide discharge standard for home systems that precluded the, after the statewide permit was adopted, it's called an NPDES permit, general NPDS, it took away the ability of local health departments to issue permits for sewage systems that discharged, either treated or untreated sewage, unless they're, except under very strict guidelines. And this was, put it, put the state in compliance with Clean Water Act regulations. And two thousand and seven, there was new statewide sewage regulations passed, went into effect January one, which included a strong emphasis on subdivision and individual lot planning for onsite systems. Last summer, passage of amended sub House Bill one nineteen, the budget bill, provided each local health department with the exclusive authority to adopt rules governing household sewage systems. And reemphasized the statewide ban on open discharge from home sewage treatment systems unless sanctioned under the general NPDS permit. In two thousand and seven, we adopted a local version of the statewide regulations. And finally, in two thousand and eight, there's a report from the Ojai Department of Health to the statewide study commission that I have a copy of and I'll leave it here, it's very interesting reading, if you want a little more background on where we're going with sewage disposal.
So what we have in front of us or came to us is somebody who wants us to second-guess your authority, I think, to put it bluntly. And I know where you are in terms of your authority, you are in charge of lot splits outside city limits, but within the three mile center limits as well, that's what your job is, is that correct?
Well, if the, if the planning commission requests the, the health department to approve a lot split, we will approve it or disapprove it based on the principles that I've...
Just laid out.
Just laid out.
Okay.
And in this particular case, the lot unfortunately does not meet the minimum standards. And we've made from the beginning very clear indications of how we can approve this lot. And we stand ready to approve it if it would come into compliance with those standards.
Okay. I would actually accept that explanation. Any other questions, Doc?
The person, the aggrieved party is willing to give an easement for future expansion of whatever is necessary to the one lot that's now out of compliance. Is that, why is that not an acceptable, you know, thing in this particular situation?
Right now, the lot is a certain size and it has all the resources on it that will accommodate an acceptable sewage treatment system for now and in the future. What the, the developers are proposing is to diminish the size of that lot to not include those resources. And there's no reason to not have that line moved to accommodate so that on that lot, you have ownership of all the resources that are needed for that home. So I don't see any compelling reason to establish an easement when you can have ownership of those resources right on the lot. We're not talking about a discharge area, we're talking about where built infrastructure We're talking about where built infrastructure would be on that property. And it just doesn't make any sense, and we've never utilized that option to have, to diminish the lot with less than those resources and then allow an easement onto someone else's property.
And the basic argument we're hearing is that the lot split and the money had already been changed and done. But in theory, it's been done without your office approval.
Yeah, that was all done before it was ever brought to our attention. And, you know, I think when someone else makes an error, I don't believe that it should be heaped upon a governing body as that body's problem. And there's ways to fix this that are very, very simple. Move the line back, fix the sewage system.
Any other questions?
There was some question about the expert soil scientist's report that they claim you just rejected or dismissed.
No, it was high-quality work. We accepted it. The data was good. The soil scientist was, you know, the data was fine. The conclusions of the developer didn't fit the conclusions of the data. I mean, if you take the data and you calculate what you need, it's very clear that the data was good, but the conclusion that the developer had was in error.
Addressing that, the counterargument that was going on there was that this, the standards were, that the county adopted are not so much excessive, but premature of the state ruling. Is that what I was hearing, or am I saying it wrong?
The way we evaluated this property first, well before the state, the new state rules were even drafted. So we've been very, very consistent with our analysis of this property. And now, the state rules gave us a finer tool to discern what could go where and what would be successful. And those, we were able to actually diminish the lot size, the proposed lot size that we would approve. We were able to counterpropose that a lot could be created that was smaller than what we first thought. So it's a better tool to analyze the soils and to study the site, but it still supports that we need a bigger lot than what's proposed.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Chuck, for coming.
Thank you very much.
And we'll make call on you other times.
Oh, please do. It'd be my pleasure, and like I said, it would fulfill my mandate here to the board to keep in contact and coordinate with this body.
And thanks for the use of my couver for the wellhead protection, too.
Well, we're, it seems to fit in well with, you know, what we do. The environmental health sanitarians are professionals that practice environmental health in all these areas. So we're pleased to be able to offer that service to the city.
Thanks. Let's see. Other items, then? Other communications? Anybody else have other items? Announcements and other business? It's about three things. I only see two listed here. First of all, I'll just go in order. Next meeting would be the 21st, I believe. Okay. The next one is election of chair for the Planning Commission. I think I had a conversation with Peg about the propriety of actually being an elected official and being chair. I'm doing it interim, and I feel it isn't appropriate for either this...
I wasn't chiding.
No, 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 actually, I felt the same way. I think it's up to the citizens to be one of the chair. So you can nominate today and have a vote, and I'll, you know, chime in, or you can discuss it and have it at the next meeting, your choice.
I can vote ahead now.
Oh, okay. Do I have any nominations, then?
I nominate Mrs. Cohen.
I second the motion.
Okay, discussion? How do you feel about it?
That would be fine. I'm the one with the fewest years left in the term, so you will have less time to put up with me than you...
I see, okay.
We were thinking more about your long-term memory.
Well, so far, that's okay.
Okay, that works.
Except about the zoning ordinance.
Well, we'll look to you to tell us whether the strike has occurred or not.
Okay.
Other discussions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? You're now chair. You want to take over from here?
No, 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 no. Next time.
Okay, next time. One of the other discussions, I think I brought this up last time, was changing your meeting times for the Planning Commission. I know I've talked to various citizens and tried to make this more accessible. The 2:30 works for some people, especially either somebody like me who's employed between those hours of eight to five, and/or although sometimes more. And as well as anybody who's retired, who can take the time to this. What I find one of the complaints is that many people who are working don't have the time to come here and state what they need or hear what they need to be said. With that in mind, I would propose either moving to noon, maybe the same day, or in the evening if need be. But I'm willing to open and entertain ideas and discussion on this.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Steve, do you attend the tree commission meeting?
Yes. There'll be one tonight at 7:00.
They used to meet during the day, and they now meet at night?
I don't know. I'm not sure if they met during the day or not.
Yeah, they did for years, and then they moved to the evening. And I wondered how that impacted their attendance.
Actually, I talked to the Chair, Alvin McWilliams, today, and they want to change their meeting time to a different night. They don't mind doing it at night, but...
Did they have more people come to the evening meetings?
Not necessarily. It's not a, well, Mayor Wile was the council liaison to the tree commission for quite a while. There's usually not too much attendance by the public. And anyone who has a specific question, problem, inquiry, no matter what the time was, they seem to be able to make it to the meeting. The things the tree commission does are not nearly as extensive and possibly controversial as what the Planning Commission's doing, so... The night meetings work for them. But they could meet in the daytime just as easy. The main thing, though, what's happening with boards and commissions now is we're trying to get all of these, all these meetings televised. You know, even now, in recent political discussion, openness of government, transparency of government is very important. And at least you can go home and you can turn your VCR on, or it's replayed. That accessibility to government, no matter if it's a meeting... The televising, I think, is the most important.
Well, they rerun them, too.
Yeah, infant item sometimes. You make sure you put on a different tie or a different coat.
Is this the same tie as last time? Oh, my God. Well, again, I also aware that there, if the tree commission's trying to move things around, this will be Thursday. I know Tuesdays, once a month, are taken up by zoning board.
The Board of Design Appeals meets next Tuesday night at 7:00.
And Mondays are city council. So it kind of restricts us to what evenings are open, if we want to go that route.
Right. And there are some boards and commissions, like the Disabilities Commission, that just meets when necessary. And I believe they normally meet at the public library. But earlier, or the Red Cross, earlier in the evening, though. 5:30, 6:00.
I would suggest that we consider doing it at noon.
Okay.
For instance, today, we had the fire chief here, and we had Mr. Hammer here, and we have Steve here. And these are all people who are going to be called on by other boards and commissions at night, too. If we met at noon, by and large, we could finish the, certainly the cases, we could probably finish in an hour, unless there's some really extensive one. Citizens always have the opportunity to send communications and get them read into the record, too. But I think when you do it at night, not only is it a burden on people who are working during the day for the city, but it's also X's out people who can't drive at night. And we've had a number of cases where there's been a fair amount of interest of people who really can't get around very well at night.
So right now, go ahead, Harry.
About 8:00 in the morning. The regional planning commission meets at 8:00.
Yeah. Actually, it meets next week.
I think that having, like, noon would also be good for people who are like architects in businesses, though, and also citizens who can take the lunch hour. Though I'm concerned that a lot of times, that some of the public hearing portions about some of the larger impact developments, if they are held only at noon, then we will, you know, preclude a lot of people from being able to come. And so I think that we need to be open to having, you know, public hearings and some of those things happen at night so that there can be, you know, public input and such. So, you know, I know at this time, it's really hard for anybody who has kids or anything to be able, even if they don't work full-time, because it's right in the middle of picking kids up and stuff. This is a hard time for me, so noon would be great. And then with the realization that we may be ending up having more public hearings and or meetings in the evening to facilitate this transparency.
Yeah, we've done that in the past and gone around to meet at the different elementary schools and that sort of thing, so for specific hearings.
So it sounds like we're thinking noon with the idea we're going to be flexible in terms of location and times, depending on the issues. Does that make sense?
So we want to change the next meeting, maybe to...
To noon?
To noon.
Okay. Is everybody in agreement with that? Should we vote on it? Have a motion and a vote on it?
I'll so move.
I'll second. Everybody in favor?
Yes.
There you go. Okay, so it's noon?
Noon.
Okay. Okay. And the last one that was brought up to me by Greg here is the, and I think from Linda Watkins of the Athens Regional Planning Commission, is the fact that the appointments are due for some of us on the Planning Commission, Regional Planning Commission. Greg brought up the fact that there is a, what is called a compatibility index in terms of whether members of the Planning Commission, City Planning Commission can sit on the Regional Planning Commission. I contacted Bob Eichenberg about this and got a response from his secretary, Linda Watkins, who really just cited section of higher revised code of 1301 and 1321. This has to do with Regional Planning Commissions. And just to cite there... Did you get a copy of that? Which one did you look, are you looking at?
Yeah, this is the, this is the 1701.
Okay. The conversation I had at one point was, this has been brought up before, but the section of 13, 713.21 is that any member of Regional Planning Commission may hold any other public office and may serve as a member of a city, village, county Planning Commission, except otherwise provided in the charter of any city or village. Since we're statute cities, this doesn't apply. I can get you a copy of that if you want, Harry.
Well, I think I have it.
So at that point, the conversation then evolves to, do we... Right now, it has a status... I'm on it as Mayor Harry is, Steve is, and David Phillips as Chair of the Planning and Development. And I feel we should stay members of that, even though there is the issue. This was, this code was actually introduced in, I believe, 1969. So, and the compatibility index statements are actually, I believe, predate that from 1960. 65. So at this point, I would probably move that we reappoint, even though I'm not sure of the actual times of reappointment. I did not get that piece of data. Do you know when you're...
I have no idea.
Steve, you want to chime in, though?
I was on the same time as Harry, whenever that was.
Okay. Greg, do you want to say something? Come up to mine.
In the circumstance of this appointment, the appointments terminate at the 31st of January. The Planning, the Regional Planning Commission meeting is next Thursday. You'll want to have your recommendations forwarded. Actually, you could act on it tonight, just as you did some other things earlier, and forward those to the Regional Planning Commission as a earlier agreement between Regional and the Planning Commission and City Planning Commission.
Did you make a motion?
No.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Okay. Reap point.
I move that we reappoint the city representatives to the Regional Planning Commission. I think it's very important to have that liaison.
Can I actually, can we actually vote on ourselves here?
I don't know.
Well, there's still three of us still.
Okay, so go for it.
So you can call for a vote.
Okay, it is our vote.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay, that's covered. Opportunity for citizens to speak on items not covered on the agenda. This is item number five. Anybody wish to speak? Lance, you have anything to say? No, you're just here? Okay. No. Did you bring it? Yes. Great suggestion. I'm sure you have enough for everybody.
An opportunity to compare and see who gets the best brown bag lunch.
Disposition of minutes. I believe you have copies of minutes. Oh, Steve, you have something?
No.
Okay.
If I can find them.
If I can find mine, too.
Yeah, I have primarily just typos.
Okay. I didn't see anything that, and I probably didn't see the typos because I'm not really great spell with a spell.
So I move that the minutes be approved.
I'll second that. Do we have any discussion on that? Will you forward the typos to... Anything else on that? Do you want to vote on that, then? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, great. Accepted. Then I have a motion to adjourn, then.
So move.
Second?
Okay, we didn't need to second. I'll second.
Okay, aye, we adjourned, then. 403.